All right, and we're going to go ahead and get started. Good evening. My name is Kelly O'Rourke, and I'm a Customer Relations Program Manager with Pasadena Water and Power. Thank you very much for joining us this evening for the Power Integrated Resource Plan, also known as the Power IRP. This is our first community Power IRP meeting. This is the first in a series of community meetings on the Power IRP that will continue throughout the year. Public participation is vital to this process. Both residential and commercial customers are strongly encouraged to participate early and often, and we're incredibly thankful for your participation today. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. A recording of this meeting will be made available on PWP's website in the upcoming days. Let me go over the format of this meeting. We have a video and several slideshow presentations prepared for this evening. Between presentations, there will be opportunities for questions. If you would like to ask a question, you have two options. You can type your question into the Q and A feature at any time. Also, after the last presentation, and we'll let you know when, you can press the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen, and we'll call on as many people as time permits, and you'll be able to ask your question live. And we'll provide answers to questions received both in the Q and A and through people in the Raise Your Hand function, live, on air, during the queue breaks, and also in writing through the Q and A function. And we'll go over that again later in the meeting. So there'll be lots of opportunities to ask questions. For more information on the Power IRP and other PWP initiatives, please visit our website at pwpweb.com. We also encourage you to follow us on social media. We're on Facebook at Pasadena Water and Power and on Twitter at PWP News. You can also sign up for our monthly newsletters, available for both residential and commercial customers at pwpweb/StayConnected. At this time, I'd like to introduce PWP's Assistant General Manager of Power Supply, Ms. Kelly Nguyen.
Thank you, Kelly. Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. We really appreciate your time. So I'm Kelly Nguyen, Assistant General Manager for the Power Supply Division of Pasadena Water and Power, PWP. We have commenced work on the 2023 Integrated Resource Plan, or IRP, and has established a Stakeholder Technical Advisory Group called STAG. It represents a cross-section of the Pasadena community to provide input on the scope of the IRP. The IRP serves as a blueprint for PWP to deliver reliable, environmentally responsible electricity services at competitive rates for a 25-year planning period. The purpose of the IRP is to establish a long-term plan for PWP's portfolio of energy supply resources. We take the IRP process very seriously, which is why we have staff dedicated to this effort. We have also retained a consulting firm with substantial IRP experience who is working closely with PWP staff to develop an IRP that is as accurate and comprehensive as possible. I would like to now hand it over to the IRP Project Lead, John Hermosy, who comes to us after serving 30 years of power and transmission planning over at Los Angeles Department Water and Power. John, take it away, please.
Thank you, Kelly, and good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. Next. As with most major endeavors, it takes a village to make this happen. And at PWP, some major portions of that village reside in the Customer Relations Group and the Power Supply Division. You have heard already, Kelly O'Rourke, at the beginning of this meeting, on that team are Jen Guest and Justin Pensacola, and I'm sure several others from Customer Relations to make this happen. My team that I'm on in Power Supply includes Kelly Nguyen, who you've just heard from, Robert Castro, Jason Tarazi, Christina Schieber, and Mark Webster, most if not all of whom are on the call this evening. Next. So what are we going to be doing? We're going to be breaking this up into three parts in order to cover the ground efficiently and quickly, but in such a way that nobody becomes exhausted. We'll be covering basics of electricity, then we'll talk about the IRP, and then Pasadena's climate energy resolution and how it ties into the IRP. In that first section, Electricity 101, is where we'll show you a video that PWP has had produced for this purpose. A little bit more about that in a moment. After each of these three sections, we'll have a break for us to answer any questions that have accumulated up to that point. Please type them in on the Q and A screen. We'll get to as many of them as we can. I hope we get to all of them. After the end of the last presentation, this Climate Emergency Resolution part, then we'll not only answer the questions that have been written, but also open up the mic, if you will, to anyone among you who would like to say something. But please raise your hand so we can call on you one at a time, and please keep your remarks to one minute so we can hear from as many of you as possible tonight. Next.
Electricity. It has become one of the most loved and used commodities in the 21st century. We use it in our everyday lives. Most of it goes unnoticed. Some say they can't live without it. But where does this electricity come from? How is it generated, and why does it matter? And how does Pasadena Water and Power play a part in getting electricity to you? Today, we will explore all the things that go into making sure the lights go on and the electricity keeps running. But first, let's look at the importance of electricity in our everyday lives. The first thing we think of is smartphones. But remember, there are hospitals, homes, schools, businesses, even our entertainment. Can you live without electricity today? It would be quite a different world. The big question is, how? How does electricity get to us? Where does it come from? To answer that, we need to do a little time traveling. Here we are in 1904. Edison holds the contract to provide electricity for street lighting in Pasadena. The power costs 15 cents per kilowatt hour, quite high for those days. Pasadena's mayor, William Waterhouse, finds Edison's service so disappointing that he refuses to pay the company bill for the entire month of November in 1905. Then, in 1906, Pasadena's leaders took a bond issue to the citizens for a municipal community-owned utility. This was the beginning of Pasadena Water and Power, also known as PWP. Over the next several decades, municipal light and power overcame many obstacles: surviving two world wars, helping fund the construction of City Hall and the Civic Center, lighting up the first football stadium in the West, and passing the Unfair Competition Act through the California Legislature. The Unfair Competition Act prevented companies from overcharging citizens in one community to offset the costs of underselling a competitor in another community. As a community-owned utility, PWP's priority is you, our customers. The city council is like our Board of Directors, and we all work together for the mutual benefit of the Pasadena community. There are a lot of policies and procedures, rules and regulations that must be met to make sure we're doing right by you. PWP adheres to all of them to ensure we are meeting goals and following laws. So how do we plan for growth and innovation and just everyday use of electricity? That's where the Integrated Resource Plan, or IRP, comes in. The IRP is Pasadena's long-range blueprint for supplying reliable and environmentally responsible electricity at competitive rates. The electricity that is being used right now, even to watch this video, was planned years ago, but is generated at the instant it is consumed. Today, nearly all electricity is produced the moment it's used. But most of the cleanest energy can't just be generated on demand, so many utilities stored in vast arrays of batteries. Soon, Pasadena will do the same. At this moment, there are workers at PWP monitoring the electricity that we are using right now. Every day, they have to predict what we are going to use tomorrow and figure out how much of it we generate ourselves and how much we buy. Then, they buy the electricity based on their predictions. Think of it like the stock exchange. They buy and sell electricity. Predict what we're going to need. What we don't use, they sell, which is how we keep electricity rates low. The PWP team is the best in the business with decades of experience. We've all seen the power plant on Arroyo and Glen Arm, but Pasadena's electricity isn't entirely made there. Most of Pasadena's electricity is brought to local substations from different states through multiple sources. Each source contributes power at different times, while working together to deliver a constant flow of electricity to Pasadena. Now, all of this leads back to the IRP. PWP's IRP will build on the foundation of earlier IRPs. PWP is taking what we knew in the past, modifying the plan so that Pasadena can set a course to secure, reliable, sustainable, and affordable energy sources for our future. All the modifications to the existing IRP reflect constantly changing laws and other conditions. We are always trying to find smart, new, and better ways to deliver power to Pasadena. Our energy is produced in many different ways. Let's separate them into two categories. In one category are carbon-emitting resources, which would include coal and natural gas. The other category we'll call carbon-free resources, though sources include solar, wind, geothermal, hydro, and nuclear. Both groups are important, and PWP doesn't rely on just one. Each group behaves differently and has its own role in PWP's overall power supply. All these sources are fed into a power grid at a very high voltage. From the power plants, the currents are carried over wires to transformers. The transformers take the high voltage and transform it to another voltage. The electricity moves through high-voltage transmission systems across the state to more transformers. From there, it finally arrives to our substations in Pasadena. Once the electricity arrives here, it's immediately distributed to everyone. All these sources constantly work together to generate electricity, and for the most part, go unnoticed. PWP is always exploring new and emerging technologies. For example, let's say one of our sources is solar. Once a solar plant is built, the energy produced has no added cost or emissions, so PWP will take everything it produces. If there's cloud cover, or even when it's nighttime, solar power is not being generated. No sun means no power. That's why implementing new technologies such as battery storage is so important. Battery energy storage systems store and distribute energy whether the sun shines or not. Wind, solar, batteries, natural gas, and geothermal plants located elsewhere in California and even out of state. Carbon emitting and carbon-free resources. All those sources of electricity make up what we call a portfolio. Pasadena always tries to have a diverse portfolio. Ours currently includes a mix of coal, large hydroelectric, natural gas, nuclear, biogas, and landfill gas, geothermal, solar, batteries, small hydroelectric, and wind. With the goal of reducing and eliminating carbon emissions, Pasadena has committed to purchasing only renewable or carbon-free resources to replace older, carbon-emitting resources. Each resource has a different level of cost, reliability, and sustainability. Wind, for example, is very good for the environment, but isn't very reliable since it only produces energy intermittently when the wind blows. Natural gas, on the other hand, is very reliable since it can produce energy day or night, but due to emissions, it isn't as environmentally friendly. California mandated that Pasadena's renewables portfolio standard, or RPS, meet a minimum of 60% renewable energy by the year 2030. Pasadena is well on its way to meeting the state's 60% RPS target by 2030. In addition, Pasadena City Council recently set a policy goal to transition to 100% carbon-free resources by 2030 in a way that optimizes electric affordability, rate equity, stability, and reliability. We are always monitoring how much carbon emitting and carbon-free energy is being used while making sure that the energy resources are reliable, the cost is manageable, and our plan is sustainable. As PWP receives energy from all of its carbon emitting and carbon-free sources, it's then distributed to you, the customer. Electricity has to be generated and used at the same time, so as we grow, our power needs will grow too. The power market always fluctuates as the balance between the need for power and available resources changes constantly. Sometimes, resources are not available at any price. Having our own power plans greatly reduces how much we depend on outside resources and improves overall reliability. But in an ever-changing energy environment, we're always planning for the future. That's why the IRP is essential. As time goes on, we must meet the needs of all consumers, utilizing a resource-loading order. A resource-loading order shows the most sustainable way to meet the future needs of our customers. Before PWP will invest in new power resources, we will encourage energy efficiency and beneficial electrification of homes and businesses. Let's take a closer look at what all of this means. PWP encourages energy efficiency through a variety of programs and services that are available to help you conserve energy and save money. You might be surprised to find things around your home could qualify for PWP rebates. Examples include Energy Star appliances like refrigerators and dishwashers, qualifying heating and cooling systems like central AC and heat pumps, building shell products like wall and ceiling insulation, qualifying electric vehicle charges, and all-electric rebates like heat pump water heaters and heat pump clothes dryers. Visit us online for more details and take advantage of these amazing programs. You'll not only save money, but you will also be helping Pasadena. Another thing that PWP encourages, along with energy efficiency, is beneficial electrification. Beneficial electrification is the process of replacing technologies that use fossil fuels with electricity in a way that reduces overall emissions and energy costs. To support the goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, PWP will continue to expand upon beneficial electrification in the building and transportation sectors. PWP will provide rebates or other resources to support not only customer electric vehicles, but also company fleet vehicles and larger vehicles such as transit buses. PWP is also proud to offer rebates on all electric appliances that produce less carbon emissions and other air pollutants than their natural gas counterparts. Distributed generation is electricity that is produced locally in Pasadena by smaller generators. Most distributed generation is owned and used by electric customers. However, most of the electricity that we use in Pasadena is generated in large facilities located in other counties or states, which is then transmitted long distances to arrive here. Since distribution generation is located in Pasadena, it can result in lower environmental impacts and improve security of electricity supply. Some customers can use the waste heat from onsite distributed generators to provide hot water or steam, further increasing their efficiency. PWP encourages distributed generation through net energy metering rates. Net energy metering rates is a billing mechanism that allows customers who generate their own energy, for example, through solar energy systems, to receive financial credits for any surplus electricity fed back to their utility. Distributed generation sounds wonderful, doesn't it? Local cleaner power, fewer environmental impacts, lower electricity bills, and improved security of electricity supply. But there are many challenges associated with distributed generation, such as: Cost. Distributed generation has large upfront costs. Operational responsibilities. Because you, the customer, own the generation, you are responsible for the maintenance, operation, and air emissions, reporting, and permits. And one of the biggest challenges is space. Space to install distributed generation in Pasadena is very limited. On the hottest days of the year, Pasadena uses over 300 megawatts of energy in an hour. Let's take a look at what 300 megawatts of solar would look like in Pasadena. That's a lot of solar. And yet, it's still not enough to power PWP's annual needs. So this is only one part of a larger picture for Pasadena's energy future. Energy efficiency and distributed generation are important because they account for power that PWP does not have to purchase. Over the course of this video, we've talked about how electricity gets to Pasadena and the different sources it comes from. But how is Pasadena Water and Power deciding on future energy sources? How does PWP know what's best for this city? That is exactly where the Integrated Resource Plan, the IRP, comes in. It's Pasadena's 20-year plan to provide customers with reliable, environmentally responsible, and affordable electric service. We have to take into account future energy demand, including trends such as electric vehicle usage, advancements in energy resources and technology, energy efficiency, electrification, changing energy market conditions, and forecasted changes in regulatory requirements. Although PWP's current IRP projects needs for the next 20 years, our past IRPs also have an impact on what we're doing today. And we update our IRP every few years to respond to changing conditions and to make sure we're still on the right track. Since our last IRP, we have been able to: Reduce and arrange to stop our coal power purchases from the Intermountain Power Project in Utah. Continue to maintain and upgrade locally generated energy at our power plant. Continue to implement a variety of energy efficiency and load reduction programs. Achieve a renewable energy percentage of over 40% in 2020. We are very pleased with our progress so far, and we are always trying to improve. This is why public involvement, your involvement, is so important. Through advisory groups and our outreach programs, we get to hear from you, our customer. Your input on how we can service you and the community better is vital to the IRP. The 2023 IRP will build on the foundation of previous IRPs with appropriate modifications to reflect changing conditions. Our objective is to optimize the PWP portfolio and to achieve a sustainable balance among system reliability, fiscal responsibility, and environmental stewardship. In preparing this IRP, we take our needs for balancing reliability, sustainability, and cost into account when planning for the future. This plan is projecting things from now past the year 2045. That sounds like a long time, we know, but it's a plan that is fine-tuned every few years. As policies and programs change, we are adapting to all those changes. As old contracts expire, we plan to replace them with new contracts that incorporate clean energy. The IRP lays out a plan to address future needs and concerns and provides an evaluation tool that guides future energy procurement. We invite you to go to our website to find details about what we're doing and where we're headed. And of course, we want your input. Which is most important to you: reliability, affordability, or sustainability? How much are you willing to pay for future carbon-free electricity? When should PWP completely stop using fossil fuels as a resource? How much of our future needs should be met with energy efficiency or distributed generation? We take every comment seriously. So please, visit our website, email us, visit us on social media, or attend one of our public meetings. Your voice is important to us, and we want to hear from you. Electricity.
Okay, folks, that was the first public rollout of our 2023 IRP video, which will eventually be posted onto PWP's website. We're still making tweaks to it. It's still not past the final edit stage, but we're getting there very soon. In the meantime, if you want to see it for yourself after this video, it is available on YouTube. Just go to Pasadena Water and Power, Power Integrated Resource Plan, and you should be able to find it and view it again at your leisure. Next. Let's talk for a few minutes about electricity to make sure that we're all well-grounded, no pun intended, before we go on to the rest of our evening. Electricity is simply the flow of electrons in any conductive material, and there are many materials that are either naturally conductive or can be made that way. But it's very important in modern-day life because electricity can create mechanical work, it can provide light and other purposes. So in today's society, including the society in which Pasadena is located, utilities, in our case, Pasadena Water and Power, are providing you not only the electricity, but everything that goes with it, the reliability behind it, the service, the maintenance, to keep it coming to you regularly, consistently, something you can count on. Next. A lot of electricity, but not every single type, is generated in the following way. If you look at the diagram going from left to right, there is some kind of force that spins a turbine. That force can be water, steam, wind. It can be actually combustion inside a turbine that operates very much like a jet engine, except that what the output is, is spinning a shaft. Now, we have mechanical energy. Mechanical energy is spinning a generator. The generator is creating electrical energy, those moving electrons. They head out onto the main grid, and then from there to distribution systems that end up with you, the customers, as a delivered product. Not all generation is made this way. Electricity comes from different resources, including this, but not exclusively this. Examples of processes that don't look like this but result in electricity are the way solar panels work, the way batteries work. There are some, what we call marine energy, resources. Many of them are in service, at least in pilot projects around Hawaii, for example, that use the power of tides, of waves, and they use the motion of the ocean, not trying to be a poet here, to create electrical energy from mechanical energy. Not using this process, but the end result is the same. Next. A little bit more into the grid. From a generating station, your output is at a certain voltage, which works well for the generating station, but for nobody else. So it goes through power transformers up to the transmission network. Those big towers you sometimes see around the city, those are moving electricity at high current, high voltage, until we get to transmission substation, where it's stepped down to a lower voltage. And that brings the electricity more locally to the system, in this case, PWP's distribution system. It heads from there to distribution stations, and from there is stepped down even further to a lower, lower voltage, where it ends up on poles, in conduits, inside cables, and takes one more step down at a transformer adjacent to your service point. That's when it's delivered to you at the lowest voltage, but with as much current as you can possibly use. Next. So with that very rudimentary summary of electricity and the video, it's time to take a break. Let's go through the questions that we've gotten so far before we head on to the next section. Do we have an emcee for the Q and A, or shall I do it?
Hi, John. This is Kelly O.
Kelly O, I'm glad to hear you. Thank you very much.
We've been answering some of the questions here in the chat. We do have a couple of questions that may benefit the group. They all benefit the group, of course, but maybe a couple that we want to answer at this point in time. Can you talk a little bit about the funding mechanism for power and for the procurement of power? And also, we have a question about council's recent resolution declaring the climate emergency and setting the goal of 100% of Pasadena's electricity from carbon-free sources by 2030. And people would like to understand, how is PWP responding, and how will the IRP process help advance these goals? So maybe we can start with those couple things, and then we'll come back.
Okay. Answer to the first question is very standard for PWP. PWP is like most other utilities for which the number-one source of funding is retail rates. So we bill our customers, and with that money, we pay for the energy. We pay for the way in which the energy is delivered, and we pay for the overhead between the two, so that all costs are covered. So that's the number-one source of funding, rates. Sometimes, and sometimes more often than other times... Sometimes, and sometimes more often than other times, a utility will need additional funding. And the next source of funding, when that happens, is the sale of municipal bonds, where essentially, the utility is borrowing money, taking out a loan to pay back later. And part of the rate collection, the income from the rates pays the interest and principal of any bonds that we might have outstanding, in this case, for power. Sometimes, there are state and federal grants available. And when they are, they go into the mix as additional sources of revenue. So pretty much in that order, from top to bottom, that's how PWP pays for things, including the energy and the resources behind that energy to supply you, the consumer. So the next question was about the Climate Emergency Resolution. We have a whole section of this presentation on the Climate Emergency Resolution.
Okay, how about this one? What is PWP doing to ensure grid reliability in light of state mandates to adopt different power generation sources? Or just in general? How do we ensure grid reliability, John?
The first way to do it is to hold what we call resource adequacy. And we're going to be talking about resource adequacy, adequacy for that matter, in the next segment of tonight's presentation. And that is capacity in reserve. It is important to locate that capacity in various places, so we don't have all of our eggs in one locational basket. It's also important to locate that generating capacity, the ability to produce energy, in various types of generation. So that if something happens that affects one type of generation, the other types will be available. So if we don't have it from one source, we have it from another source, type of source is what I mean. We do these kinds of things, and more, to keep the system reliable and resilient. Resilient meaning if some event should happen, we have a way around it. We have a way to still supply Pasadena's with the energy they signed up for. Anything else?
Thank you, John. We had a couple of questions about the STAG, and just wanted to hear from you a little bit about the STAG's role. And we had noted earlier in the presentation that a STAG had been formed and has been formed, and has been meeting, and has been an active participant in the process. And I just wanted to offer the opportunity to share a little bit more about that.
The STAG is the Stakeholder Technical Advisory Group. And that is, if you will, a focus group of stakeholders that are close to PWP in the Integrated Resource Plan process. We confer with the STAG. We get opinions from the STAG. We share with the STAG what's going on. And that input guides our PWP in those areas of PWP where we have discretion. That is where we can make a choice. For the 2023 IRP, we have a STAG consisting of 18 or 19 people, depending upon how you count them. And we are convening right now, every month, more or less. And right now, it's very currently more often than once a month to keep track with the pace at which the Integrated Resource Plan study is developing. So it's really a two-way street. We give information to the STAG, and we get feedback from the STAG. That is in addition to public meetings such as this, where we tell you what's going on. The STAG is working with us on a more frequent basis. Anything else?
John, I see a lot of our questions are about 2030, are about our planning for 2030, are about council's recent actions, about kind of the next steps in the IRP process. So why don't we move on to the next phase of the presentation, and we'll come back to the questions. But I just want to thank everyone for these great questions. We are responding in the chat, and we're going to do another live session like this after another short presentation. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, Kelly. And with that, we go on to our next section. This is about the IRP itself. The IRP, because we use it so often as an acronym, I'll spell it out again, is the Integrated Resource Plan. It is our roadmap, as Kelly Nuyen said, for our future of power supply, where it's going to come from, how we're going to obtain it, how it would perform, what goals it would address, and to show how it would work for the City of Pasadena in all those areas that we talked about: environmental stewardship, cost slash affordability, and reliability. But we don't do it solely out of the goodness of our hearts. The State of California requires us to put out an IRP at least every five years. That's five years or more frequently. And recently, we have been doing it more frequently. So this is our next major IRP. Calendar has told us in 2023, we must have one. So that's why we're in this process. It stretches out at least 20 years into the future. This current IRP is actually being framed to stretch out a little bit more than 20 years into the future because we want to see what will develop that far in advance. So that if we have to start something sooner, we'll have some advance notice and can get started on it. And the IRP itself is a report, I call it the 200-page book that we're about to put out later this year. And the contents and the structure of that book, i.e. what it's supposed to cover and how it would look to a reader, are written in part according to guidelines that come to us from the California Energy Commission. And those guidelines get updated every few years. There are draft guidelines that have been discussed already in 2022, and we're looking at those very closely. Even though they haven't been fully adopted, we plan to use them in the current IRP. Next. You've heard it a couple of times. Now you're going to hear it another time. We need to find a balance among environmental stewardship, cost, and reliability. And each one of these has a minimum level that we need to achieve. The intersection, the happy point among those three groups doesn't necessarily have to apply to every single resource that we use, but it does need to apply to all those resources put together in a collection. Next. I talked about resources. How do we choose them? Well, these resources have several major aspects. They supply energy. As we said before, energy is actually the amount of electricity you can get out of it. And each one of these resources behaves differently. The energy that we get out of it is measured in megawatt hours. It's, by the way, delivered to you, the customer, in kilowatt hours. Some of these resources have a renewable attribute. They are renewable energy. They can be classified as such. And there are state guidelines as to what constitutes renewable energy and what doesn't. In shorthand, we say, how green is this energy? And for every megawatt hour of green energy, renewable energy, we have what we call one renewable energy credit. It's just a mechanism for us to count it. And there's a centralized system to count it so that everybody sees the same thing. A renewable energy credit is not used more than once, and it's traceable to a specific source. Now, going to the reliability aspect of that, I answered a question a little while ago about the reliability. One way to measure the reliability, and it's only one component, but a big one, is its resource adequacy. How dependable is it? Unlike energy, unlike the renewable aspect of a resource, resource adequacy is measured in megawatts. Megawatts is instantaneous power. And resource adequacy tells us, for a given resource, on the average, what percentage of that can be counted on. And that's translated into megawatts for that particular resource. It's a number somewhere between zero and the total nameplate capacity of the resource, depending upon what kind of resource it is. Next. I mentioned power. I mentioned energy. Power is the rate at which energy flows. It's measured in watts, kilowatts, megawatts, but they have watts attached to them. Energy is the actual quantity of power over a certain time. That's why its units are in watt-hours, kilowatt-hours, megawatt-hours. The analogy shows up here on the screen for you. And that is like the flow of water down a pipe. Power is the rate of water flow, say in gallons per minute. Energy is the total amount of water in gallons, if you will. That's the analogy that we like to use. Next. I see that we've been getting a number of comments about our power content. And through this IRP, we'll be charting how that power content changes. As of 2021, PWP reported what you've seen on the screen as their power content. Now, the power content, if you really measure it in power, that is capability of what we have by resource, whether it's used or not, that shows up on the right side of your screen. You see the majority of it currently, currently being year 2021, happens to be natural gas and coal, with renewables taking up the most of the rest. The energy is separate from that. It's different. That is, out of all those resources, how much actual energy was created? And you'll see, for year 2021, for PWP, it happened to be almost half of it coming from coal and a much smaller part coming from natural gas and everything else. So everything else is about 52% other than coal in 2021. If you're wondering, is it changing? Yes, it's changing. Will it change in the next few years dramatically? And we'll show you how in the coming slides. Next. If you chart how much energy PWP is serving and tag it to the generation, on the generation side. So from the sending side to the consumer side, you see the following chart over time. About a quarter of the way from the left is the current year. And you see it stacked resource by resource. Couple of things to note. One, look at the gradually rising red line. That is the energy that we need to serve, accumulated over a year. And this is, in this chart, measured in gigawatt hours. That's billion watt-hours. And it's steadily rising. Also, notice the number of resources that we're losing naturally over the years because either the contracts are expiring or we have gotten out of the contracts or the resources are going to be decommissioned. And that makes the resource stack, if we do nothing about it, drop, 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 until we get to the right side of the chart, which is 2045. Third, we have been trying to add to that resource stack. And the top couple of layers of that represent some recent contracts that we have signed or are about to sign. One of them is for a combined solar and battery system. So the photovoltaic solar field generates electricity. It goes into a battery. And from the battery, it goes to the grid. And from the grid, it goes to PWP. From PWP, it goes to you. The other one is a geothermal resource that has been long established in California. We are able to get a contract for a chunk of that resource. And for the next few years, it is filling up the top of our resource stack. But as you see from all the white space on the right side of the chart, much work remains to be done. This is the zone that the IRP is most concerned with. Next. If you remember, a couple of slides back, we talked about energy. We talked about renewable content. We talked about the capacity, reliability of resource. Now, it's time to talk about the renewable content. It's measured in renewable energy credits, or REX. To give you a couple of examples, we can count on one REX for a documented source that is solar energy. From a coal plant, sorry, no REX available. REX can be traded. They can be detached and then reattached to energy. When they're reattached, they make the energy, officially speaking, green. And one of the multiple requirements placed on PWP and other utilities in California is to show a growing amount of greenness or renewable energy content in what it supplies to its customers as each year goes on. That's why I said a couple of minutes ago that we can expect the power content label, if you track it in future years, to change radically. Next. If you take that same span of time we were talking about a couple minutes ago, and now apply it to REX, this is how currently green PWP's resource portfolio looks. It shows with the brown-climbing line there, the state requirements being placed on us. It also shows the individual resources that are being applied to that requirement. Note, all of these have to be renewable resources to be on this chart. It reflects the latest couple of contracts that we've signed or are in the process of signing to bring more renewable resources into PWP's portfolio. And it also shows a big white space to the right of the chart. So whatever we do, whatever we acquire, has to satisfy that criterion too and fill up that big white space. Next. Finally, the last leg in the triad is resource adequacy. How can we depend on a resource in terms of megawatts whenever it's called upon? Think about it like energy insurance. Something happens. You want to cash in on the policy. What's the policy good for? And often, as with insurance, you cash in the policy when times are not so good, when something happens that requires resources to be called upon to deliver energy for which they were standing by in reserve. And having a certain amount of reserve is a legal regulatory requirement on PWP, and it's quantifiable. As I said earlier, different types of resources contribute in different ways, to different amounts, to resource adequacy. And you see some examples here on the scale, from the least per megawatt to the most per megawatt on the nameplate. How many megawatts are they really considered to be good for in terms of resource adequacy? The yardstick for resource adequacy on resources currently comes to PWP from its balancing authority, the California Independent System Operator, who defines these numbers and revisits them every once in a while. And we use those numbers to gauge how much resource adequacy any one of our any one of our particular resources is good for. And we report it back to them on a regular basis. Next. Looking at the same time span, going out to 2045, from a resource adequacy point of view. Again, if we do nothing special beyond what we've already done, the picture looks like this. The red line up there represents pretty much, to make it simple, the peak that PWP has experienced or will forecast itself to experience in a given year. And the resources are stacked to climb toward that red line. The goal is to pass that red line. So that we always have sufficient resource adequacy there by some measure of reliability. And as you can see, we have a lot of work ahead of us. Not only is there a white gap space between the resources we currently have and that ominous red line, but look how soon it begins. This is 2025, when we first have that gap and we have to make up for that. So as with the other legs of the triad, any real solution, any real supply plan for the future has to fill those white gaps and has to fill this white gap as well. Next. With all of that, it's time to sit back, take a breath and try to tackle some more questions with answers. So team, what do we have before us?
John, you're gonna love what we have before us because we have some great questions from this wonderful group here. We'll do a few rapid fire and then we'll get ready for another portion and then we'll do our kind of live chat here. But a few questions first, sir. Can you just walk us through how a draft IRP will be presented or preliminary results will be shared with the community?
The draft is being, is going to be shared with the community as represented by the STAG. This is one place where the STAG is, as I said, in lockstep with PWP. And that when we get to a draft of IRP, then we'll share it with the STAG before anybody else sees it to get internal feedback from these representatives of the community in a deep manner. So that we can go back and refine the IRP to something that will hopefully, and as close as we can make it, work for all. The public at large will see the IRP when it's published. It will go to the Municipal Services Committee of the City Council, then to the full council. Once it's approved by the city, then it is filed with California Energy Commission. We plan on that happening toward the end of this year. And I believe we have a timeline showing that. So you'll see it later in this presentation. How much later is later.
Thank you, John. What company will be doing the modeling of various scenarios? How many scenarios will be modeled? And which variables would be selected for sensitivity analysis? Will the underlying assumptions be publicly available so that the public can check out how reasonable these assumptions are?
Okay, was that four or five questions? Help me out. I'll start with the first one. Then please pop the rest of them to me so I make sure to cover them all.
You got it. I'll keep you honest, sir. Don't you worry. Here we go.
Thank you, Kelly. The company PWP is hired to work with us to do the heavy number crunching on the Integrated Resource Plan is ACES. It's the Association for Cooperative Energy Solutions. They have done IRPs before. They did the PWP 2021 IRP update, as a matter of fact. So they're quite familiar with the PWP. So they're our number cruncher. And I respect them so much that that description doesn't do them justice. Next question.
How many scenarios and which variables will be selected for sensitivity analysis?
We are working on a handful of scenarios. How many is on a hand? We will share with the STAG when we meet with them next. It will be on our agenda for the Stakeholder Technical Advisory Group at our next STAG meeting, which is a week from tonight. We are still making tweaks to it, but we've almost got something. And hopefully by one week from now, we'll be able to show it to the STAG. As far as sensitivity analyses are concerned, we look at that more closely after we've settled on the scenarios to be represented. Sensitivity analyses are throwing a monkey wrench at your, at your resource portfolio and seeing how your system performs. How resilient is it? Generally speaking, the scenarios, not scenarios, but sensitivity analyses that we've used in the past relate to events beyond PWP's control, often natural events. So while we haven't made a final decision as to what they will be, there will probably be along those lines, there will probably be a couple of them applied to the best looking scenario that we find after the modeling runs are finished. Next.
And how much of this information will be available to the public? Or how can the public better understand what went into these models and scenarios? And what kind of assumptions?
If you're on the Stakeholder Technical Advisory Group or know somebody who is, that's one way of passing this very preliminary internal information in some form to the general public. We, in order to keep the integrity of the IRP, to keep it honest, comprehensive and true to its roots, we do the number crunching pretty much in isolation so as not to be tainted by outside influence, influences who might not have reliability, environmental stewardship or, and/or the cost affordability at the tops of their agendas, to say it nicely. But the, the public will see it when it's issued and the STAG as a representative of the public will see it before it's issued while there's still time to make changes. That's how we're doing it. That's usually, by the way, how all IRPs are run by utilities.
Thank you, John. These next couple are a little bit of a different flavor. How is PWP utilizing demand response as a form of grid reliability or commercial and residential resource reduction or efficiency programs? How are, how are those being incorporated and considered?
Think about it in two ways, passive and active. And by the way, this is by no means the full spectrum of demand response or demand side management available. Just a couple of things that PWP is currently using. By passive, I mean building, building things into the customer's side of the meter so as to reduce load. And this is usually things that the customer does, practically exclusively in PWP's case. Energy efficient appliances, energy efficient construction, beneficial electrification, as we said earlier, perhaps solar panels on the roof, perhaps a battery storage system at the customer's location. So those are things that are built in and they operate to, from PWP's point of view, serving the customer, lower the load. Now there are active ways to do that. And the most direct and active way is to send a signal to a customer service that says turn off something or turn down something. This requires a lot of coordination and communication. So not everybody has it and PWP is thinking about possibly using it in the near future. And it could be part of this IRP. It's something that we are considering as a pseudo resource where if you do something to add to your supply or do something to reduce your demand, it operates the same way when you balance out the equation. So right now, we don't have that much in terms of active demand side management. We'll be considering that in the near future, probably as part of this IRP.
Thanks, John. Another thing that this group would like to know if PWP is considering is this. It says, I believe that residential parcels are limited to 200 amp service with more homes per parcel and trends to use more power versus natural gas. When will PWP update the grid, upgrade, excuse me, the grid to support 200 amps per residence and not per parcel?
That question actually involves both the power supply and power distribution systems. Power distribution tells you how to get the energy from the power supply to the customer at the meter. And that is going to be the subject of what we call the Distribution Master Plan, which will be referred to in this IRP. But it's a separate plan and has a life of its own. When we look at an individual customer's service capability, that is, that is more of a, a service planning question. First of all, the customer's equipment behind the meter, as we call it, needs to be sufficient, it's a matter of the building code, as a matter of fact, to supply whatever the customer is planning to put in there, including multiple loads on that one parcel. We don't look at it by parcel, really. We look at it by service, how many meters there are at a particular location. Each one needs to serve, be able to serve the load to which it's connected on the other side of that meter. It's a pretty intricate, it's a pretty intricate process. I've tried to simplify it a bit. Yes?
Thank you, John. We got another few great questions here before we move on. There's a question about how can we see these questions? We will post after the meeting, a question and answer document along with this video. John, can you explain the difference between carbon neutrality and carbon free energy?
To make it really simple, and I'll start with carbon neutrality. Imagine that I am a resource. If I'm carbon neutral, I may emit CO2 or other greenhouse gases that I shouldn't. Oops, I'm sorry, I did that already. I have to find some way to take it back or to compensate for it so that what I do balances out what I emitted. By doing that, I achieve carbon neutrality. Carbon free is where I don't emit anything in the first place. If you want to find any CO2, you won't find it for me because I'm totally out of that business. That's carbon free.
And a kind of similar question here. What's the relationship between renewable energy and carbon free energy? This person can think of several types of renewable energies that are not carbon free, but yet they're referred to as, as green because they're renewable. Is that a good term to use? Can you please speak more to that?
If you're thinking what I'm thinking, you're absolutely correct. We think about this, for those of you who like set theory, is a Venn diagram where you have everything that's carbon free here, doesn't emit CO2 when it's operating. Everything that is renewable here is classified as a renewable resource. There is an intersection between the two resources that are carbon free and renewable. Outside, there are resources that are carbon free and not renewable. There are resources that are renewable, yet not carbon free. Let me give you an example of this, renewable, but not entirely carbon free. And it does apply under the state regulations on renewable resources. A biomass generator that burns waste wood chips from the forest spews out CO2, but is said to be renewable because all it's doing is liberating the carbon that was absorbed by the tree when it was alive. That's renewable, but not carbon free. Over here, carbon free, but not renewable. Hoover Dam. It generates a huge amount of energy potentially, but it's not labeled as renewable because large hydroelectric projects are deemed to have created an environmental impact when they were first built and are not given regulatorily that kind of credit. So large hydro would be an example of carbon free, but not renewable. Another that would fall into that category is nuclear energy. If that helps.
Thank you, John. Let's do a couple more before we move on, if we're okay, because we have some really good questions here. Given the recent unanticipated increase in the price of quote unquote "natural fossil gas," which skyrocketed in the past few months alone here in the area, how does PWP imagine that it can predict the cost of this energy source in its modeling? Or energy, any energy source going so far out as you do?
Simple answer to that is whenever PWP is using a, an energy resource that depends on natural gas to fuel it, no matter what kind of source it is, for the total duration that PWP intends to use it, PWP will have to deal with the cost of that natural gas. Now, PWP happens to have some internal resources for natural gas, but most of it is bought from the spot market or on what I call midterm contracts. In other words, this purchase to not under PWP's control. And the shorter the market is, like day by day, the more volatile that is changeable, the price of that natural gas is. There are a couple of ways to deal with that. One way is what we call hedging, to do something to stabilize that price of natural gas. And we can talk for half a day on hedging. I took, I once took a course on hedging. It was two days. So there are things that could be done to stabilize the price of natural gas when you're using it. Another way of doing it, even more simply, but more profoundly, is to not use it in the first place. So you're not subject to natural gas price since you're not using natural gas in the first place. As PWP decarbonizes, it'll be depending less and less and less on natural gas as a fuel and therefore will be exposed less and less and less to changes in the price of that natural gas. Anything else?
Thank you, John. I have one more before, you have lots more. And we'll get to these as, we will get to these. But one more before we move on to the next session.
And by the way, folks, if you, if you see an answer to a question that you asked but did not get an answer to in the course of the presentation, great. If your question remains unanswered, feel free to hit us with it at the end of the last presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you for that reminder, sir. Assuming an accelerated transition to renewables causes a temporary rate increase, how will PWP work with the general manager and the city council to provide significant relief for low income individuals and families who are already impacted by increased energy rates from fossil fuels?
You're going to see this discussed in the IRP right after we talk about affordability. Affordability is how much this will cost and how much the impact would be to the individual rate payer. Right after that comes equity. Among rate payers who have less of an ability to pay, how are their needs addressed? That, first of all, the affordability will determine that in the course of IRP. The equity is something that we can make suggestions on, but these are really subjects of city policy and the rate. of city policy and the rate-making process, which comes after the IRP. It's a separate process, but it must consider those questions. So, the short answer is, first of all, we figure out how much the whole thing's going to cost. What is the total cost burden, total number of dollars? And then, as a separate process after the IRP, but to which the IRP can give the slightest hint on how it can be done perhaps, then there are ways of dividing up that cost, if you will, among rate payers, which is essentially what a subsidy program would do.
Thank you so much, John. I still have great questions, but let's move on and come back to me.
We're barreling into the last section of the presentation before we have the last Q&amp;A section, and then we open it up to you, the attendees. The Climate Emergency Resolution. For those who haven't heard, the city council passed this resolution late last month. And it says, in its most germane points, there is a climate emergency out there Pasadena recognizes. Also, to respond to that, Pasadena is setting a policy goal to reach 100% carbon-free energy by the end of 2030. We defined earlier what carbon-free really means, and the resolution's directing PWP to do what it can to reach that goal. Doing what it can is the part and parcel, subject matter of the IRP. The IRP is our roadmap. So, if it charts out how we're going to look in the future, what it would need to consider is what that future would appear like according to the policy goals that have been presented. And here is the policy goal. In fact, the resolution itself says, "Use IRP process to plan with this in mind. Everything we talked about before will come into place." The reliability, the rate equity, the affordability that precedes the rate equity, and the, of course, keeping a stable energy supply while we're doing it. So, we have to fill in all of those gaps between resources and our hardline goals. So, by doing that, we consider the city's policy goal as a way to point us toward and to seek a way for that energy future to accommodate this goal that's been prescribed to us. Multiple scenarios should be applied to this goal. What does multiple scenarios mean? It actually means two things. We show one here on the screen. One of them is, are there different pathways to meet that particular goal? Is there a Plan A1, Plan A2, Plan A3 to get to Goal A? So, we'll be looking into that in the IRP in ways that we can discuss further in the STAG and that we can report back to you at the next public meeting. The other component is, in case there is no Plan A, it just doesn't work out, it falls down in one or more of its aspects. Is there a Plan B? Is there a Plan C? Is there a Plan D? What can we do? So, we have the state mandated goals, which take us out to 2045 and have milestones along the way. We have the 100% by 2030 goal over here. If we can make the 100% by 2030 goal, what would that look like? What would it entail? What would it mean for Pasadena's? And if, for some reason, and IRP would identify that reason, if it exists, that this goal is unobtainable, how close can we come to that goal? And this would be an intermediate goal. And those would also be the subject for study in the IRP in order to, as we said at the beginning of this presentation, make it comprehensive, answer all your questions, tell you not only the what, but the why. And whatever we do is going to include decarbonization. It would address the climate emergency. How well we can do it remains to be seen, but the simulation should give us a pretty good index on what that would look like, how close we can come. Pasadena set a particular policy goal for itself. How does that stack up against the state's man, not mandatory, but regulatory goal? I should put it that way. How does that stack up against the goals that different utilities within the US have set for themselves? You see in the screen before you a chart that shows different kinds of goals, such as zero emissions, net zero, or renewable. And we noted the difference earlier between renewable and carbon-free. They're not completely the same thing. Or reducing emissions by percentage, different cities have different goals. And this chart shows by number of utilities where they stack up against PWP. PWP's way over on the left here, this is Pasadena's goal. So, it shows that it's more ambitious than most goals set by US utilities in the environmental arena. Let's narrow it down to California. You see the California state goal there on your right, and you see among California utilities trying to address that state goal, how much better they want to get from an environmental viewpoint. Once again, Pasadena shows up. It's still, it is still toward the left end of that chart, which means the goal is earlier decarbonization and more complete decarbonization, if you will, than what most other utilities are going to be trying to do, most of them at least. Combining a number of resource types creates a portfolio. What resource types might we be considering? This is a slide that will be going into more depth with the STAG on next week, but here in this public meeting, we preview it for you. These are some ideas that PWP has. They're still up for discussion with the STAG, but these are based on feedback we've already gotten from the STAG. Resources that we want to throw at these goals to see where the computer modeling will optimize them. Do they have a place? Where do they count? How do they come together in a solution? They include different types of solar, and solar comes in different flavors. In fact, we're talking here only about solar photovoltaic, there's also solar thermal. But for simplicity and feasibility, we're going to focus on solar photovoltaic, probably. I don't say for sure. This is still up for discussion with the STAG to get their input. On a utility scale, on individual rooftops, and community solar, which in terms of size is somewhere in between the two. Wind, onshore and offshore. Onshore has been highly developed, the technology is there. Offshore is in its relative infancy, especially off the coast of California, but we're looking at it with great interest as a possible resource. Geothermal, we're already using, and we may look to get more. Energy storage also comes in a couple of flavors. Utility scale, the big banks of batteries and inverters. And customer site, the ones that individual services, what we call behind the meter. Large nuclear, we would consider only with respect to keeping what we already have. We have shade under 10 megawatts out of the Palberti Nuclear Generating Station in Arizona. And we would throw that as an existing resource with a long lifetime. We're considering on keeping that in our IRP. Why? Because it is a carbon-free resource, even if it's not necessarily renewable. Hydrogen fuel cells, for those of you who are familiar with them in cars, can be extended to the utility sphere. And then there are combinations of these. I gave an example earlier, when we actually have a contract right now that will start up in a few years, that has a solar field connected to a battery system that connected to the grid. It is important not only to ask what we would be considering, but also what we would not. And these include, we've decided pretty much, no new nukes, no fossil fuel generation. It would only distract us from an early decarbonization goal. So, that's what we're thinking. For those of you who are on the STAG, here's a preview of what our discussion will be come one week from now. I mentioned earlier that we're working according to the schedule. Here is the main milestone schedule. For those of you who are on the STAG, thinking about when they're going to see a draft, the draft of the report would come somewhere between the outline of the report, which you see here as milestone targeted at mid-April of this year, and the final report to the Environmental Affairs Commission, which is in, we're targeting mid-July. So, somewhere in between those two dates, we should have a draft available, and we'd be sharing that with the STAG, the Stakeholder Technical Advisory Group. After we have a final report, it goes through level, several levels of review and approval. Approval precedes the next level of review, culminating in a decision by the city council, which we're earmarking for mid-October of this year. So, as you see, we have a lot of work in front of us to get to that stage. After the city council approves it, it becomes the word of Pasadena, and we can share that with the California Energy Commission come the end of this calendar year. We have defined some of the scenarios. We're almost finished with a list of scenarios. We'll be sharing them with the STAG, but I've given you a hint as to what they might look like in the previous slides. The consultant needs baseline data and cost information and such. By the way, including a load forecast on which we're collaborating with the consultant faces on what we think is going to be the most realistic guess on the future of Pasadena, what it comes to its load. There are also some sections of the IRP that do not directly relate to scenarios, but stuff that has to appear in the book. And so, we're trying to get a head start on writing little sections here and there. The main part will be the scenarios themselves and their analysis, but why not? If we're pressed for time, take care of these other parts first. And so, we're beginning that work to lay out this book that will eventually appear. We are giving periodic updates, not only to the public as you, but to the public in council and committee meetings. The next opportunity for us to do that will be at the Municipal Services Committee meeting on March 13th. We are putting ourselves on their agenda. So, for those of you who are interested in listening in and maybe even attending, please mark that date on your calendar. Now, we're done with the presentation portion of the program. Let's go through as many questions that we can get to before opening up the mic.
Oh, good. So, John, I just wanted to share with everyone, I did have some questions that people had entered a bit ago now. We didn't have time for them last time, so I'm going to start from there. So, if you're saying, hey, where's my question? I'm working in chronological order here. Hey, John, it looks like you project load to increase by about 18% by 2040. This person has seen estimates that due to transportation electrification and building electrification, power deliveries in 2050 could be anywhere from 1.3 to three times current deliveries. Can you talk a little bit about how we do that modeling and how we project load increase?
Load forecasting is both a science and an art. You are looking at factors such as economic development, housing starts, business progresses, who opens, who closes, migration to and from the city. And on top of that, now you have home electrification, building electrification, built-in energy supply and management programs such as solar and batteries. You've got electric vehicle chargers, everything in the mix you can think about, and probably several more that you haven't. Some of them have an upward direction, they increase the load, some have a downward direction of influence on the load. And so, it's really, again, the art and the science of putting them all together and looking into the future to make our best educated guess, albeit a guess as to what's really going to happen 10, 20, 30 years into the future. Well, what we're doing right now for this IRP is using recent load history, PWP, some facts that we know, so that we have a general idea as to the direction of the curve. And then we look at all of these factors and see how that will be influencing that curve. We're not the only ones looking at it. The state has looked at it too. For California as a whole, if you scale that down to Pasadena, what does that load curve look like? You put the forward curve next to the history and see, do they match up? And is there any big change in the slope one way or another? And then we do the hemming and hawing of estimating how each of these influences will affect that load curve and then come up with what we concur as our best really educated guess as to what's going to happen in the future. And if it sounds like a lot of back and forth, it is. And we're working on that right nowadays.
Thank you, John. John, what's the approximate value of 1 megawatt of REC or rec?
My trading friends and resource planning friends can help me on this. Recs come in three flavors in the market. The premium flavor, which is bundled with energy generated in California or directly delivered to a California balancing authority such as the California Independent System Operator, in which PWP is embedded, is, last time I checked, going for something like $18 per rec, give or take a few dollars.
No, John, that is actually up to over 30 now.
Wow.
Yep. It's 32 as of last week.
As of last week.
Thank you. John, on a scale of least to most reliable, talk to us about where solar with battery
Solar with battery? Let's simplify that to resource adequacy. Solar with a coupled battery has a resource adequacy close to 100%. Call it about 90%. So, let's say you have 100-megawatt facility that has, that has, the battery size is 100 megawatts, would save four hours of storage. That's pretty much a standard nowadays. And it's connected to a solar field that's several times that amount. That collected facility is probably good for close to 100. I'd say about 90 megawatts, the way the California ISO sees it. So, if you look at the size of the battery, and you have a solar resource bigger than the size of that battery, the resource adequacy of that combo is about 90% roughly of the size of that battery.
Thank you, John. John, utilities in cities like LA, San Diego, and Boston are partnering or joining international organizations so they can efficiently transfer. so they can efficiently transfer to carbon-free energy. And there's one listed here. Is this something that PWP is considering?
That could take many forms. If you're talking about a, say, community choice aggregator, PWP is in practical terms, its own community choice aggregator. So we'd say, no, we don't need to do that. When it comes to tapping into sources for renewable energy credits or say carbon offset credits, if the IRP points us in that direction, there are organizations, especially on the carbon offset side, who link buyers and sellers, and that would be something we consider if we get to that point. For the recs, the the picture is mostly centered on the Western United States with, as I said, sources that are easily identifiable. So those are the organizations who will be working with. The Western Electricity Coordinating Council, the Western Renewable Energy Generation Information System, or Regus, is one that we use to tally renewable energy credits. And the markets themselves that use the officially defined sources of renewable energy credits. So it's standardized between them. So those are the avenues that we use to tap into renewable resources that we might not actually hold and own at the time.
Thanks, John. Hey, John, is there a complete breakdown for the consumer price cost by resource? How will these different resources impact overall prices for our community on our utility bills?
With apologies in advance, I have to say it depends. It depends on how many of those resources are actually owned or developed or both by the city of Pasadena, PWP, and what types they are, because each one has a different cost versus what types PWP buys as or rents more accurately under power purchase agreements, energy storage agreements, and the spot market. Especially for the power purchase agreements, they are very resource dependent on how they are priced. So they they tend to settle in on specific price ranges for each kind of resource. And even if they give you all the energy you could ever want and all of the reliability you would ever need and the all the environmental attributes that we would require, it's the cost of those that still has to be optimized so that we find the least cost fit of a group of resources to Pasadena's needs. What does that mean? That means that while it depends, we're going to try to find, it's our mission to find the best mix that will give us an affordable combination to keep the cost to the ratepayers at a minimal while meeting all those other requirements.
Thank you, John. John, have we, has PWP considered a second transmission line into Pasadena coming from LADWP to Glenarm?
There already is one. It's at 34.5 kilovolts. It is good for a fraction of PWP's load and PWP is able to use only a fraction of that fraction at the moment. It is only a connection. It is not a resource. For it to become a resource would require a negotiated contract between PWP and the utility at the other end of that line, which is LADWP. But PWP has taken strong and intensive action to make that line operable and to test it so that what we have left is some kind of possible future agreement with LADWP for that line to be connected to a resource and thus be counted as a resource for PWP.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Earthcliques, fires and other natural disasters are inevitable and unpredictable events that impact resource adequacy and create costs for repairs and liability. Where and how do these risks figure into the planning in the IRP?
Short answer, they figure in as candidates for sensitivity studies. Those are actually among the items on our lists, our candidate list from which we'll choose to pick a couple of sensitivity studies to apply to the temporarily preferred scenario to see if it's still preferred. But yes, we'll hit it with contingencies such as those.
Thank you, John. What about weather? What future weather file will be used by the modeler in the IRP scenarios? This is important because hotter temperatures increase load.
Very, very quickly to say, in the load forecasting business, what you what you look at are probabilities. In this IRP, for example, are we going to expect a one in 50-year heat year, a one in 100-year heat year? And associated with each of those statements is a megawatt level. And we're going to use that to apply to our resource adequacy curve going into the future. And there's a trade-off involved. Applying to a a more frequent weather event, which tends to be a milder weather event, is easier to plan for. Applying to a much rarer but more severe weather event makes your system stronger. So we need to find and we will find some happy medium between the two.
Thank you, John. John, we have a question about rooftop solar. Will PWP seek to streamline permitting process? Are we considering adoption of a new online software that's being used in other areas of the state?
As far as how PWP applies incentives to rooftop solely, that's really a policy question. It's not, it's not the the main substance of of the IRP. But we'll take your suggestion and channel it to the right folks to see if there is a place for it. Is it already being considered? And so should we be considering getting the future in the the realm of customer incentives?
Thank you, John. John, this person wants to know if the public will be able to see exactly what the electric car assumptions are in the calculation of load growth. They're referring to another report by a municipal utility in the area and suggests that the 15% growth that we're suggesting is 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 just not realistic. Can you speak to that?
What we're assuming and the source of that assumption will appear in the IRP. There will be a write-up on that.
How about the Inflation Reduction Act? How is PWP including the Inflation Reduction Act in IRP scenarios?
As my dad used to remind me, don't count your chickens before they're hatched. The IRA is a possible source of federal funding for programs. That funding depends on the award of grants. That depends on writing a grant. And in short, we'll be pursuing that as a source. But in all prudence, you don't consider a source of revenue until you actually have it in your hands. But we will be pursuing it as as a way to make this transition process a whole lot more inexpensive for Pasadena's.
John, is the future value of a rec projected to increase to a point to be modeled in the IRP?
Actually, ACES has a subcontractor called Horizons that looks at that and other market parameters. As I said earlier, there's a market for recs and they'll be getting that information from Horizons. Horizons will be a financial expert in that area. They'll give us, they'll give us a forecast on what will happen to the cost of a rec.
John, at this time, I'd like to recommend that we use the remaining time together to open up the chat. I see David with the hand raised. Hi, David.
Hi, David.
Hi, John. David Cutter here. You know, I don't hear anything mentioned about conservation. And I imagine that that is a very difficult thing to try to model, estimate, I don't know. Again, can you say a few words about where conservation falls here? I know conservation, we really need to be using a lot less energy. And I realize that's anathema to Western culture. I'll just stop there. What do you think?
I think a conservation falls under downside management. It's reducing the load so you don't have to, somebody like me, we don't have to struggle so hard to find the supply to meet that load.
Gotcha.
You can, you can do it, as I said earlier, passively or actively. And we always urge our customers to conserve. The electric power industry is one of the very, very few that rewards people for using less of their product. When we ask people to conserve on a spot basis, we're doing it usually in response to some kind of emergency brewing. For example, as what happened during this past summer. Other than that, we say in bill inserts and advertising, please conserve as as a way of life. And whether or not we do it actively will be something in the IRP will study. Is it is it really worth it? It has a technical aspect and also has a societal aspect. How willing will people be to have PWP control their loads? We have to, we have to consider that as far as the acceptability of it. So as I said, passive and active and whatever the the solution turns out to be, we got to supply that amount of energy and more.
Right. Thank you.
John, I just want to remind people that we're still, we're working on chatting responses here to some questions. We did have a question here, John, that I thought was was interesting. And I do want to encourage participants to raise your hand if you would like to. There's an icon at the bottom of your screen. You can just go ahead and then push that and then we will we will call on you. John, did you? Might be faster than typing, indeed. I see Carl with a hand up. Hi, Carl.
Hi, Carl.
Mark, can you help us? Can you help us unmute Carl? Oh, there he is.
So I I was muted while I was saying thanks. Here's a question. You talked about incentives for rooftop seller, individual seller. So as I understand it, Pasadena is still compensating under NEM 1.0. But we're now at NEM 3.0 at the CPUC. What is the plan for Pasadena? Will we continue at 1.0, you know, rates? Or will we be shifting to after April 15th or 14th to NEM 3?
It is a policy decision, Carl. It's not being made by the resource planners. It's being made by, if you will, another part of PWP and will eventually, as PWP have to answer that. I really don't know which way we're going to go, but I do expect that we are going to make a move on NEM in the near future.
John, I just, John, this is Robert Castro, just wanted to input that we're one of the only utilities that still has NEM 1.0. And so we're being targeted by a lot of solar developers because of the inordinate amount of payment received by the homeowners relative to folks who live in neighboring utilities. So that also has a part to play in why some of the, why it takes so long for individual customers to have their, all the processing and administrative work done. I've got a few questions on that as well.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you. I just will leave that as up in the air because some of my neighbors asked me about the April 14th deadline to, you know, put the paperwork together to get the benefits of NEM 2.0.
Thank you, Carl. And I see Robert Haw with a hand up. Robert, can you please unmute yourself?
Yes.
And then after that, I see Lauren, you're going to be after Robert.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, John, for this this presentation tonight, you and and all the PWP staff. It's been very helpful. I just wanted to follow up with one of the questions that I saw in the chat regarding would PWP consider hiring an energy services provider company? And I believe the response that was given misinterpreted that question. The question was to do with helping PWP, having one of those companies do the entire transition, the entire implementation to reach of the transition to 100% by 2030. And the answer was just like, oh, no, we have somebody to do the modeling for us. I was wondering if you could maybe supply a little more detail on the efficacy of maybe hiring one of these energy service provider companies, which are are in fact quite widespread throughout California.
They are. I alluded earlier to PWP's being its own community choice aggregator. We have the the need and the the resources, human resources, to do that job in-house. Remember that the PWP has a statutory requirement to serve the citizens of Pasadena, the ratepayers, to be more exact. So any decision like that would not be taken lightly on that. What it would amount to doing is to outsource our power supply and the power supply decisions, which then would put the Pasadena ratepayers at the mercy of whatever choice that energy service provider provides and at whatever cost they charge. So we're not ready to go in that direction yet. We are, we're perfectly happy to learn the lessons of other people who have gone that route, see what works and what doesn't, so we can apply them on our own.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hi, Lauren. Go ahead.
Okay. Hello. I thank you for this two hours. It's very helpful. Are you actively reaching out to any other California or US cities that are switching to carbon-free energy and are recognized as being very innovative? The second part of that same question is, are you willing and actively pursuing possibly joining some of these cohorts? I mentioned earlier in a question, the World Resources Institute. And I am asking if you, if Pasadena is interested in benefiting from other cities' innovations and would you be willing to join in one of these cohorts? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren. The first part of the question is admittedly easier for me to understand than the second part. We are studying what our neighbors are doing, including but not limited to Sacramento Municipal Utilities District, PG&E, Southern California Edison, LA Department of Water and Power, City of Roseville, City of San Jose. We study what their goals are, what their IRPs show, and how successful they seem to be. And are there any strings attached, if you will, to any of their goals, anything that that we should know? It usually comes out in the literature that they provide, if you if you know where to look on that. So we are learning from what our neighbors are doing. One of my favorite sayings is from Groucho Marx, who once said, "I like to learn from other people's mistakes because I don't have time" "I like to learn from other people's mistakes because I don't have time to make them all myself." And in that sense, we are closely attuned to what our our neighboring utilities, especially the municipal utilities, are doing. As far as associations are concerned, we need to look at what the association is, what it does, and what's in it, if you will, for the people of Pasadena before we make any commitment to it. If you send us more information about the particular organizations you have in mind, we can look at those and see how applicable they are to what we do, how we do it.
Thank you. I will indeed send you some information. Thank you, John.
You're welcome, Lauren.
John, we had a question in the chat about something in the video. And we might have to go back to the video and take another look and answer this question later. But when we show the graphic of solar panels required to power the city, is that total energy consumption on a peak day? Or does this assumption factor in existing solar already installed and operational and on rooftops and or even estimated future installations?
Interesting question, because I recently made a back-of-the-envelope calculation on what future installations would look like. And my numbers to a to a rough approximation are close to that that shaded area in the video, as it turns out. But what the video is trying to show you is what solar panel coverage it would take to meet to meet peak consumption at on a hot day in Pasadena, basically. Peak consumption on a hot day. It's not average energy. Remember, we don't get any solar at night. So that's what the narrator meant when she said, but that's not enough because we have to not only cover our capacity needs, which is what that diagram shows, but also our energy needs, which is continuous on that. That would not, even if we had that installed, that would not be enough to submit to rather satisfy our energy needs and would not in itself be a solution. We need actually more than that. Now, can you can you imagine putting all of that solar inside Pasadena and remembering you need to get permission of all the local property owners what that which you might not get on that? That's part of the conundrum that we have to solve. Another part of it being that of what we call resource diversity so that we have enough energy and enough capacity to serve everybody at any given time, even on a cloudy day, even on a windless day. So we need to look at that. We need to look at that. So as enormous as that looks, that's still not enough, as the video said.
John, we have another person with their hand up, and that's Phil Blum. Mark, can you help us unmute Mr. Blum?
I do apologize, but I can't seem to find Mr. Blum.
He's at the bottom of my list.
Actually, I could read the question that Mr. Blum has. His question is, I have a current net metering agreement with PWP, but my solar generating capacity only meets about half my usage. Can I add more capacity under my current agreement?
That would be something to be answered by the people who are administering administering your agreement, probably under customer services, who could answer that question. The question is, can you use an existing agreement to expand the solar installation you have? The answer is probably in that agreement. I'm not the one to answer it, but if maybe one of our customer services people on the line happens to know the answer, we can get it to you now. And if not, maybe we can get it to you later.
So I did, I do think we unmuted you, just in case you had another question or anything else you'd like to share. I do see another question from you here in the chat, which is, will the recording be made available to view after the end of the meeting? Yes, it will. We'll add subtitles for people that want and need the subtitles. And so we'll put that up later this week. But we'll notify the group when it sets up, and we will put the Q and A up as well. Hey, John, why does geothermal availability peak and then fall off in the near future?
Maybe you were referring to the fact that natural geothermal resources are not infinite. What happens is that you're looking at the heat from the from from underneath the earth's surface and liquid water underneath the earth's surface. The the highest quality geothermal comes out like a geyser with its own steam. Just a small minority of available geothermal resources look that way. And often what happens is that the underground reservoir runs out of water. So that's what I think many geothermal developers who have facilities that have been there for a long time are experiencing. One that we know about is using recycled water to pump back into the earth to make up for the steam that was generated. And by doing that, they've been able to keep their geothermal generators going for 30 and 40 years.
Thank you so much, Sean. So we had about three minutes remaining here. So I just wanted to thank everyone, our panelists and our community members and attendees for making the time to join this important conversation about the power IRP this evening. And I especially want to thank you for your thoughtful questions and informative feedback. And, John, do you want to say a few things? And it looks like AGM Nguyen might want to share a few closing thoughts as well. So I'm going to go ahead and mute myself here.
Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Excuse me. We also wanted to encourage everyone to fill out our new survey that we just put out today. It's on our website, and Kelly has put the link on the slide here. And, you know, we would encourage you to go to this link right after this meeting so that you don't forget and help us help us through this process. So I really appreciate everyone's time, and we look forward to seeing you in the next community meeting in April, I believe, April 27. So thank you and good night.
Until then, take care.
Could I have asked a last-minute question? Will the meeting in April, the town hall, will that be in a physical venue, in person, or will it be another Zoom?
Go back a slide, probably on Zoom. And if it changes, we'll let you know.
Yeah, because it would be nice to have these sorts of meetings in person like they used to be in the past.
So noted, we'll think about it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.